...one two dash seven four zero dash zero eight, Whitevine County, but at the request of the new property owner, owners, I'm sorry, Tony and Pam Gomez.
The utility board recommended approval of this item.
What's the letter of the council on the side?
I would like to motion to approve.
Motion from Councilmember, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Councilwoman Williams, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
That's three, four, and one, given, passes. Item eight, items for discussion, possible action only of the Ely City Council to consent agenda. We have minutes from May twelfth, twenty twenty-two, and bills from May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two, and May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two. Are there any questions or corrections regarding that?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to disclose our path member of the Home and Fire Department's rating, bills paid for the city fire department with benefits of volunteers, I, as a path member, all abstained from voting on, uh, being on both, for the, for the good and the for the good and the suit.
Understood. Uh, if there are any questions or corrections, I will entertain a motion for approval of the minimums.
A move.
Motion from Councilman Spear, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilwoman Oliver. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Fair and disorder. Item B, new person. Okay, uh, with that, we'll move on to item two, Mayor Roberts and Katie Coleman, NRHA Director of Communications and Public Relations, Kevin Vicki, NRHA Business Development Specialist, discuss the possible action, approval of resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero eight, provided for the transfer of the city to Ely's twenty twenty-three climate activity bond volume cap to the Nevada Rural Housing Authority. Good evening.
Thank you. Good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I appreciate the opportunity to be with you this evening. For the record, my name is Katie Coleman. I am the communications director with the Nevada Rural Housing Authority. Uh, tonight, I'd like to provide an update on the home at last homeownership program impact within the city of Ely and provide an overview of the source, use, and limitations of private activity bonds, and why Nevada Rural Housing is requesting the transfer of your unused volume cap. In two thousand and six, Nevada Rural Housing Authority launched the Home at Last Down payment assistance program funded by private activity bond volume cap, also simply referred to it as volume cap. The city of Ely has been supportive of the homeownership program from the very beginning, with a total of two point one million of unused volume cap being transferred to the housing authority over the years. Since two thousand and six, the Home at Last program has provided sixty-four Ely homebuyers with eight point eight million in affordable mortgages, three hundred thousand in down payment assistance, and one hundred thousand in estimated federal tax savings. Fifteen years after launching Home at Last, the program has helped over ten thousand rural Nevadas to achieve affordable homeownership. Program line, that's a total of two point two billion in affordable, in affordable mortgages, sixty-three million in down payment assistance, and thirty-six point five million in estimated federal tax savings that's returned to homebuyers through the mortgage tax credit program which I'll describe in a moment. Nevada Rural Housing is requesting a transfer of your unused volume cap twenty twenty-two to help us continue operating the Home at Last homeownership program. So the program has been using previous volume cap transfers to provide that mortgage credit certificate program, commonly referred to as the MCC. Aside from providing homeowners with tremendous tax savings year after year for the life alone, the tax credits returned to those homebuyers is money that is reinvested back into your local community. The MCC helps homebuyers qualify for a mortgage because the estimated tax savings is considered additional qualified income. The additional income also helps lower debt-to-income ratios, which is especially helpful to those carrying anything like student loan debt, credit card debt, et cetera. The MCC provides first-time buyers or qualified veterans with a dollar-for-dollar federal tax credit equal to twenty percent of the mortgage interest paid every year for the life alone, as long as they continue to live in that home as their primary residence. So just to provide an example, adding this MCC tax credit to a three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar mortgage with an interest rate of five and a half percent would generate an estimated tax credit equal to forty-one hundred dollars just in the first year of homeownership. To break that down as monthly kind of savings, it's about three hundred and forty-one dollars of additional income to the family. What could your community members do with three hundred and forty-one additional dollars per month? That's a lot of, a lot of money to reinvest into whatever they need. Nevada Rural Housing Authority serves only Nevada's communities with a population under one hundred and fifty thousand, so this includes all of Nevada's fifteen-year-old counties plus the rural areas of Clark and Washo counties. And to continue, to ask for your continued support, we're asking for your transfer of the unused volume cap to Nevada Rural Housing Authority. Before I, uh, open it up for questions, I did want to shift gears just a little bit from the homeownership program and acknowledge Ms. Lee's comments about meeting with Mr. Brewer earlier this week. Uh, he did, uh, make an update and provide Ms. Lee with information about our desire to be in Ely, to bring housing to Ely. There's no question, there is a need here, absolutely. Uh, the question is, how do we do that? Uh, as Ms. Lee indicated, we had, uh, tried to bring some housing in partnership with hospital a couple of years ago. Uh, that didn't quite work out. Uh, we were doing some rehabilitation work on the bristlecone apartments, uh, with all the contractors in town doing that work. We thought it'd be a good opportunity to also build some new units here. Uh, the hospital didn't do forward with that, and so that was okay. But we are interested, we want to make that effort. Uh, we are able to do the best development housing projects here when we have partnerships with municipalities, with entities like companies, like hospitals, like mines. We've had discussions with Robinson Mine. In fact, uh, we've had some discussions on what a deal could look like to develop some housing, uh, with them. And so I just wanted to provide that update, let you know that we want to have those discussions, we want to continue to have those discussions. Uh, Ms. Lee does have my contact information, Bill's contact information. Call us anytime. We'd like to, to sit down and look at what this could look like. We know the need is here. So I did want to provide that information, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
I don't, you know, I, I let Jennifer talk with Brewer because I was in a meeting with Brewer, and it was terrible. Nothing had been done in this community. Because bristlecone apartments, that's good, you know, they're definitely there. But for other housing, he flat said, there's nothing, we haven't built no housing, you know? So that's, I would make a comment, but I'll touch this basis with Jennifer before I go off on the soapbox on that. But I hope, the word try will be, we will get it done. We need to, we need some help here, you know, everybody's talking about no housing, and Brewer just says, yeah, well, and then I believe it's done about that. How many have you done in Whitevine County? None. So we need to change that. This is a lot of money. This is two thousand and six, the city's been doing, I, I was a city clerk for thirteen years, every year, every year, every year, and what have we got back? None. You know, the, the bristlecone apartments, they're definitely in need. That beautiful item complimented the league of city meetings this last year to rent it. That turned out perfect, you know? So I'll touch the basis with Jennifer, so that's my only comment.
Any other questions? Yeah. Thank you. All in favor of taking a motion on the side?
I do.
Motion from Councilman Spear for approval, do I have a second?
I'm sorry.
Second from Councilman Flankis. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Fair and disorder. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember, City Clerk Lee, LP Insurance Services Principal Tina Prochetti, NP's AIP representative, discussion for possible action acceptance of renewal proposal from Nevada Public Agency Insurance Pool and approval for payment in the amount of two hundred and forty-three thousand eighty-nine dollars and sixty-two cents from fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three funds.
Mayor, this time I'd like to, to show, uh, for the record, Tina's my daughter, and I've obtained on that item, and look.
Understood. Good evening.
Hi, for the record, Tina Prochetti, LP Insurance. I, I trust you've all gotten your packets ahead of time and had time to review them. I have with me Stephen Romero, who's a colleague of mine for many years from the pool and pack, and he'll be giving, um, a large portion of the presentation about coverage, so if you have any questions after you reviewed the packets. Uh, the information that was in your packet should cover loss control services provided specifically by LP Insurance. That is not to be confused with the overabundance of services that come from the pool and pack directly, as being a member as well. So you are in a unique situation partnering with LP and the pool and pack where you have loss control and risk services from us and the pool which other agencies aren't able to provide. So that is a unique piece that's in your packet, you probably have already seen, uh, in the previous years. Um, really, um, for the most part, I'll have Stephen talk about this piece and the changes in the premium for this year. I, I know that sounds like a large dollar figure, and it is, so, uh, there is reason for that, the majority, the driving factor was additional properties that were being now sure added to your current policy, but Stephen has some specific information to talk to you about that, unless you have any questions about the packet that I sent out earlier. I mean, okay.
For the record, Steve Romero, I'm with pool pack. Uh, I think that, uh, if everyone saw that we were going to talk to you about insurance and they left the building. So, uh, we'll, we'll continue on and we won't talk about insurance. What we'll talk about is, is pool pack. Pool pack is, uh, in, in this case, we're really talking about pools, so, so we actually have two different pools. Pool is property liability, uh, cyber and environmental, uh, pool, and then pack is the workers' compensation pool. Uh, with pool, um, we do provide a lot of services, and I should say with pool pack, we provide our services and you utilize those services. Uh, part of them, uh, are with regards to the risk management services that we have and also the HR services that I know that you use. Uh, we do have a, a very sizable e-learning platform, uh, that you can assign e learnings to your staff members to be able to complete those e-learnings. Uh, what we did this year is I was able to pull up the services that you've done throughout the last three years, and they put a dollar value to that. It's right at about nineteen thousand dollars that you utilized within services from the pool, uh, within the city. So, uh, just again, a little bit more of a benefit that you end up receiving other than just a contribution to the program. Uh, the program itself is your program. You own, you own pool pack. Uh, if you're a member of pool, you are an owner of pool. What I do for pool is I'm broker for pool, and I broker all the reinsurance every single year. So I go out and I shop your insurance, your reinsurance, to make sure we're getting the best terms and the best deals that are out there. Uh, again, Tina brought up that there was a, a increase over the expiring. Uh, this year's premium came in at two hundred and forty-three thousand eighty-nine dollars and sixty-two cents. That's a twenty percent increase over expiring. On the pool side, at our annual ordening, we did discuss there was going to be approximately a twelve percent increase within the pool itself. Uh, that did not take into consideration any exposure change. Tina also brought up that you did have a sizable increase in your TIB, which is your insurance without. Uh, so that value actually went up twenty-one percent over expiring. So when we take the twelve percent and that twenty-one percent of the exposure change, you actually didn't really receive a twelve percent increase in your total because we had that exposure change that ended up bringing up to that twenty percent increase total.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
So, um, the, the increase in our, uh, whatever's being insured?
Yeah.
What would that have been? We didn't add any buildings, is that new vehicles, is that something that I'm missing?
Well, we were at, last year, we were at sixty-one million, this year, we're almost at seventy-four million in total insured out.
So I, I can maybe, um, talk to that a little bit. Um, when we went through the premium process, um, and we went over values of buildings, um, Jennifer went to certain departments and, and it was, but then the property values were valued as far as replacement cost and things like that, so, you know, you didn't acquire the property, but the, um...
Replacement costs are on that.
Right. I mean, that's totally simplified, but in a nutshell, that's sort of...
And we also had an audit.
Yes.
We also had, um, the...
Yeah, the appraisal.
Appraisal audit.
Every, every three years, you have a physical, you have a physical appraisal and stuff.
And that drove a lot of it up. Uh, we didn't want you to be underinsured, um, so that was primarily, as Stephen said, it's not, you actually were better than most and not actually receiving a twelve percent increase, which was kind of average or normal for the market because your exposure group, that's really where your premium dollars were being directed, that is in addition to last year. Um, o- obviously, there's an increase, it's kind of the times we're living in right now, but it, it was better than the average because your rate really didn't reflect it as much as your exposure.
And, and one of the things in, in, that was a great, pretty common about having your premiums that were done, we actually, when I go to market, I, I, all your property is placed in the lemon markets. Right now, when we had our meetings in February with all of our lemon syndicates, uh, their biggest concern was with regards to your values. Uh, something that pool has always done is, is they've worked with asset works, uh, doing these, these rotating valuations to keep our values up to date. Uh, the lemon markets, their concern was with regards to the inflation that's going to occur. Uh, they've had some large losses that have happened that were very much underinsured. They wanted to make sure that we were keeping up with trends and keeping up with that inflation value, and we could show that to them by using asset works, and even when you're, you're not getting those physical, uh, appraisals, uh, you are getting that stock trend every So with that, uh, I, I'll just leave it open for questions. I, I know you had a long meeting, so I won't try to extend any longer.
Tina, did you talk, did you talk with Jeanette on the same reason? Because I can remember the twelve percent, and I think she budgeted fifteen.
Yes. When we got news that there was a possibility of a, on average, twelve percent increase, I sent an email and a form letter to Jeanette in Jennifer's office telling them that that was what trends were looking like, so that everybody could be prepared ahead of time. So we didn't show up here today and blindside you all. Um, so it was sent to the, the clerk's office, I believe, and we had conversation that, you know, we didn't have your specific renewal numbers in yet, but I did think it was important to get in front of you all what, what the trend looked like, so there could be some preparation. So, uh, there was communication, there usually is ongoing communication, um, sometimes on a monthly basis between Jeanette and Jennifer and myself to try to make sure, you know, claims, not just rate and renewal information, but claims and questions about coverages and things like that, so, but there was actually was a letter sent soon as we had indication of that too.
Okay. And, and last year, we did have a sizable loss, two hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollar loss.
So did that, Jennifer, did that memo, email, or whatever, get in time for Jeanette to budget preparation?
Yes, and, and, and as Tina said, it was a twelve percent global increase at that time, you know, she didn't know what ours was going to be, but, um, the treasurer informed me she budgeted fifteen percent of, you know, for an increase, so...
I, I just felt it was important, um, not knowing what yours did look like, and I was pleased that it was better than that, but I did want everybody to know that that could be, it could be worse, it could be better, but that was the trend, so we tried to get ahead of that.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
What's the letter of the council on the side?
Somebody can motion to accept their renewal.
Motion from Councilman Spear, second from Councilwoman Williams. I'm sorry.
Is Councilman...
Motion from Councilman Oliver, second from Councilwoman Williams. Um, with a noted extension from Councilman Spear. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's three, four, motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item four, Councilman Spear, Councilwoman Williams, Parker, discussion for possible action, approval to donate up to two hundred thousand to the Boys and Girls Club of Cherokee Meadows in order to establish the Murray Street Early Learning Childcare Center in the city. We do have a representative here for questions on that project.
I am open for any questions. Thank you very much again. My name's Mark Jacoby with the Boys and Girls of Cherokee Meadows, and thank you very much for your time this evening, my presentation two weeks ago. If anybody has any questions or comments, back under us.
We just spent two hundred dollars bucks, but we're stuck here on the luck.
I think the, he's a great wife, I think. I think the letters read and the comments from the public pretty well sells the deal. My youngest daughter, who wants to go to the grand child, and her bill camp again to decorate because it's good, dude. She, she can't, she's living in, uh, Spanish Springs, and this girl's fifteen months old, trying to get in, you know, she, she works from home for the state, trying to get this little girl into the style of around kids, it's impossible, you know? She's a dad, I wish we had that over where she lives at, so I think it's, uh, excellent possibility, and everything works out good on this right here.
I, I'd like to have the honor, make it motion to approve, please, so we got this thing started.
So we have a motion from Councilman Spear, do I have a second? Second from Councilwoman Williams, are there any further discussion, questions for...
There's a further discussion.
Yes.
Uh, a question that struck me when, uh, super, the superintendent of schools, uh, Mr. Young was making his comments. Do, does the Boys and Girls Club, are they going to own that building up there?
No, it's going to be deeded over to us, and if, if we ever end business of not operating the childcare, it would revert back to the school district.
What kind of a group have you got? I mean, you could get thrown out today after your move in.
So this, the deed, if I'm mistaken, according to my mom, is going to be a quick clean deed. You guys will get it if...
It's going to be a, it's going to be a long-term lease, I'm not sure of the years. It's a long-term lease, and, um...
I'm pretty not supportive of putting that kind of money in something if you're not going to be owning.
Well, we will own the building, we're putting our money in, you know, foundation money that we're going to recruit from it, the mining money, the five hundred thousand dollars that the mine has donated. Um, we have a great partnership with the school district right now, we operate, like Mr. Young said, all of those buildings.
The administration of the school could change tomorrow, and you don't know. I, I don't understand, uh, the original, what you presented, uh, about silver room, was total ownership.
Never have been.
Yeah.
Never have been ownership.
Well, I, uh, I'm sorry, but, uh, putting two hundred thousand dollars, this money is something that shouldn't be owned by you, by the Boys and Girls Club.
It'll be a long-term, a long-term, they're going to deed it over to us as long as we continue to operate a childcare, an early learning center out of that building.
Well...
So basically, you have a deep description, right?
Yeah.
So I'm hearing two things, you say deed over, but then you also say long-term lease.
Um, excuse me, we're, we're in partnership with them, and the lease will be for an extensive amount of time, um...
So it's a lease.
Yeah, as long as, as long as we operate the childcare out of that building. It has not been drawn up yet from the school district and, and us, but we're currently working on it, the, and it's been like this since day one, talking with Adam Young and, and Mr. Johnson, and that's, that's been the process.
We appreciate the clarification. Did you have anything else to add? Mr. Flankis?
I mean, I, I'm not against the projects, I think it's ready. I just want to see it be official, all the way through.
The building is ready. Is there any other discussion? So we have a motion and a second. I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right. So, I'm sorry, I have one...
That's three, four, three, four, one against, uh, motion passes.
No, is true, hear what I said?
You said aye or said no?
I, I said, I'm not against, I meant to say aye, and that is...
Aye. Thank you for the clarification. Four, four, one excellent, motion passes, thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a nice...
Thank you.
Item five, Councilman Spear, Councilwoman Oliver, discussion on the update on quarter group efforts on the city beat's behalf to secure federal and state funding.
I can't get to talk to this one because I missed the last meeting. That would happen. Actually, I, I, what I see today is a little more encouraged, and two weeks ago, I felt like that, that we had pretty well been shot out of the, out of the, the water totally on any, any of these appropriations taking place in that earmark at, at Congress, but the report today appears that Senator, Senator actually, Senator Cortez Masto, because I can still, got a couple of earmarks in there, and the possibility that one of them will be presented, uh, to review, so I think we're still in there. It's a little brighter than I've seen, I mean, I thought we're pretty well out of the water and very discouraged, uh, knowing how the government works, but what we know now is that there's a poss, still a possibility that one, if not two, more, more than one of our, uh, projects will be, uh, drawn fully convinced, that's a good thing for us, for I can see. Other than that, that, just keep the, keep up the good work, guys, because it's tough, it's really tough getting this kind of funding, and especially in a election year.
We should know by then, next week, they will say, but for sure, Congressman Horstberg, Horstberg's office did not select any of our projects, so we're a hundred percent negative of that.
So you got the poker face guy.
Yeah.
Anything else to add?
Good.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, item six, Councilwoman Williams, Parker, discussion for possible action, approval of the Ely Volunteer Fire Department Support Services Agreement, establishing a cooperative relationship between the parties and a fixed contribution of fifteen hundred dollars per month, paid by the city of Ely to the Ely Volunteer Fire Department for its performance of emergency support services. I'd like to disclose that I, my, my husband's a member of the Ely Volunteer Fire Department, but I don't believe this will be taken in personally any more than any of the members.
I would also like to disclose, my thirty-six years in the fire department, I get certain privileges from the volunteers, so I will abstain from this right here. I don't think that, I don't think you...
Thirty years, I think my dad's got forty-five, or I count them, my son, you know?
So I, I abstain from this, I don't...
Can I tell you?
Please.
Uh, I was very glad that they came and, and explained this to us, and, and, um, I would like to see this happen because this money is spread out really over anything that's necessary, and it serves everyone, and really it's not running to one particular person or a couple of people, it's, uh, it's almost like running the household, so I, I think it's very important, and I would like to see this happen.
And I appreciate the work of our attorney and all of the council members who had input there, and, um, the work from the volunteer fire department too, cleaning this up. So, any help?
Yeah, David.
All in favor?
Um, that we approved the Volunteer Fire Department Support Services Agreement, establishing a cooperative relationship between the parties and a fixed contribution of fifteen hundred per month.
Motion from Councilwoman Williams, Parker, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Councilman Spear. Any further discussion? Call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's three, four, with one extension, one passes. Item seven, uh, council members, human resource director Trask, discussion for possible action, approve anti-bullying harassment training for emergency council members, all in favor of that?
I'll make it approve.
Motion.
Comment, and I'd like to, uh, include our lead minute in this also.
I would there get...
And then we're already done, it's true.
Oh, cool.
Yeah.
This is a call.
So is there any motion from Councilman Spear? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second from Councilwoman Williams, Parker. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Fair and disorder. Item eight, council members, city clerk, please, discussion for possible action, approval to pay Nevada U.S. cities and municipalities fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three membership dues in an amount to be determined up to ten thousand four hundred and thirty more dollars and thirty-eight cents. And this is generated from the presentation from Wesley Harper, the executive director of last meeting.
So in your packet, I put last year's invoice just for comparison purposes, um, it was twenty-five hundred ninety-four dollars and fifty-five cents. And it was just a discussion at the last meeting, you know, to, to do something, to do some sort of an increase, but not necessarily a full ten, so...
So any things on the table up to that amount?
You know, the first time we seen this, I went through this and did this multiplication up, and, you know, this is a four hundred percent increase, four times what we're spending fast, and you take a look at this, and the ones that, the good degrees, so, you know, bother to about this, is the Henderson Reno, Sparks, there's no increase whatsoever, Las Vegas is, is going to get eighty thousand bucks, but if you take a look at it, their rate is like one point zero one five, and that was, oh, one five five, excuse me, uh, for over a hundred fifty-five thousand, so that's fifteen cents, and yet we're getting nailed sixty cents, or forty cents, excuse me, we're three thousand a month. I don't think that's, I don't believe that we're going to get the same amount of exposure from Nevada U.S. cities, and I'm not an advocate of Nevada U.S. cities, that those entities got three or four hundred or five hundred thousand population, who's the, they're going to be working most for? Us or them? I think we have to be a part of it, but four times that, that dues, I just don't think we, that's, couldn't wait, spend. But four times that, that dues, I, I just don't think we, that's, couldn't wait spent. Now, I don't mind seeing a little bit, I don't know, but Jeanette budgeted any increase. I...
Well, uh, we, we knew what the amount was, so I discussed this with her, and she budgeted the full amount in case the council wanted to do that. So, so it truly is up to the council. That doesn't mean that the council has to pay that budget.
And I, and I probably, uh, uh, you know, agree with that, we do need to be a part, but I know we're not going to get those same services. We're going to get overlooked on a lot of things because we're smaller. But I thought I did remember Mr. Harper saying whatever you...